Would by article, would you like to? Is that a yes or a no?
Yes.
So Madeline, what do you do maybe?
Yeah, one and two, and then I'll do the next two, and we'll just go around. How's that?
All right. Okay, Article One is to choose a moderator by written ballot to preside at said meeting. I don't think we need to explain anything about that.
I have a question about that.
Yes.
I'm going to have a pork and a lard do the moderator, or?
No.
Have some local person?
This year, this year, we have local talent coming in.
Yay.
Christine, would you like to take, say who the big local talent will be?
Yes, Sheriff Joel Mary will be moderator.
So everybody should behave themselves. Article Two, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for general government wages. And you will see that there is a difference in the recommendations between the Select Board and on the Select Board and the Budget Committee. And that's, the difference there is between six percent increase and an eight point seven percent increase. The eight point seven is, is the top number, naturally. And rather than try to resolve the difference, the Select Board felt that this is a place where democracy is in action and the town meeting should make the decision ultimately.
Is that across the board to the proposal? Eight percent or six percent across the board?
It was eight point seven is the official cost of living. And so the, the higher number represents the eight point seven.
Emily, what was the school?
Well, it varies because it depends on the contracts that they're under.
We averaged somewhere between around three point nine for the ed techs and around five for?
Three point nine for ed tech?
So we couldn't reach consensus, so this is when we said, you know, this is really the town's meeting. And we thought that you guys should make that decision on your own rather than having us throw it in your?
Democracy in action, folks. That's what the town meeting is all about.
So is that, as I said, across the board? Everybody, there's no, nobody can do more, a little bit less?
No, we'd cross the board for all the town employees. Article Three, to see what sum the, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for insurance and benefits. And you can see, again, there is a difference between the total and the Budget Committee recommendation. And that reflects the difference in the six point zero percent and the eight point seven. Article Seven, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for town administration. And you see that total, the Budget Committee and the Select Board are in unity on that number. Article Five, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for legal services. And we are in a board at twenty thousand dollars.
So do we have a, a town lawyer?
Yes, we do. We have an attorney who is, who is on retainer.
Who's that attorney?
Sally Daggett.
Sally Daggett, and she's been the town attorney for a number of years. Article Six, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for protection. That includes ambulance, fire department, and animal control expenses. And you'll see that to- total. The difference, again, is, is in the, in the percentages. Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to amend its public, main public employees retirement system, affectionately known as main PERS. The retirement system plan effective July first, 2023, for its current participating firefighters who have service under regular plan AC prior to August first, 2021, to make all of their service with the Town of West Bath special plan three C service and to remit lump sum payment by July thirty first, 2023 in the amount of eleven thousand four hundred and thirty dollars to main PERS of the additional liability to the plan resulting from this change and to authorize the town administrator to sign the amended agreement between the town and the main public employees retirement system. You want to explain that one, Christine, please?
Some payment was cheaper than over time by fifty percent.
Yes, it was. Our fire chief, Jonathan Bean, is also our code enforcement officer. When he was hired for code enforcement on July first, 2019, he became a full-time employee of the town. So at that point, he started paying into retirement. And West Bath, as an employer, paid in a portion to his retirement, too. That was at a lower rate than is designated for the fire service. John is our only firefighter who qualifies for the main PERS retirement program. So this amount of money will make him whole, bring him back to July first, 2019, for that higher retirement rate.
Article Eight, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the additional liability to the M. PERS Town of West Bath, Plan, Special Plan C. And the proposal is for eleven thousand four hundred and thirty dollars, which would allow us to, uh, appro- raise and appropriate the money that we just voted for if we accept Article Seven. And Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to appropriate all dog licensing fees and penalties collected during fiscal year 2324, except for a recording fee that must be retained by the municipal clerk pursuant to state law as additional payment to the animal control officers for services rendered to the town. And that was a recommended expenditure. And take away Gaddy.
Okay, Article Ten, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for harbors and waterways. Budget Committee recommends seventeen thousand eight hundred. Article Eleven, to see if the town will vote to appropriate an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand eight hundred from the shellfish conservation account for the shellfish warden contract in town voters' expense. Article Twelve, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for sanitation. We have a total of sixteen thousand six hundred. Article Thirteen, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for public works. The total recommended by the, to the Select Board is eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
A couple of questions. Does that include road repair? Or is that another expense?
It's all, if you look in the, um, it's general roads, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
That's, that includes road repair?
Yeah.
And repairing the culverts under the road and stuff like that?
What is determined that needs to be made, need to be done, yes. And then the birch point reconstruction is three oh one thousand. So the birch point is separate from the rest of the roads? Only because they have that erosion issue that needs to be tackled. So they're separating it out, general roads from birch point road.
Oh, okay. Well, the, the, um, Witch Spring has gone under the Berry's Mills Road, and there's a gigantic hole that would swallow a cow.
The problem with Berry's Mill and Birch Point is they're not town roads, they're state roads. So we need to get DOT, main DOT. So I know Julie has called them multiple times. I would strongly recommend that you guys give them a call.
I mean, there's, there's a dangerous hole.
It's like eight inches deep. The, the road has collapsed in where the water's coming out.
Yeah, yeah. There's been lots of recommendations, but again, it's not our town roads. So it has to be main DOT that, that does that. My understanding is it's best to call the Toxum DOT.
Okay.
I've got through a couple of times.
Is there a number we can share?
Got lots of.
I think it's on the website, isn't it?
Yeah, I guess that's where I got mine.
And I did talk to Steve about that today, and he said DOT has been out there looking at it. So they're, it's definitely on their radar.
Yeah, I saw them actually, actually, they just put up, is that sign still up there, bump? They just put that up. Yeah. But I see them out there walking around. They put up the balls on.
Today, it's, it's a hole.
It's absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
They may say, people are going to move in a line now.
That, what did you want to call it? What did it used to be? A sinkhole?
A spring.
The spring, the spring is, is definitely under there and moving and?
Yeah, yeah. And pouring all over the road as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. They should put the witch spring back where it was.
I totally agree with you, but I don't think that's going to happen.
I don't think so.
I would like to see it, then I wouldn't have to pay for Poland Spring, right?
We'd have to pay for what?
Poland Spring, which is getting pretty expensive. Any other questions? Article number fourteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to negotiate a new multi-year contract with the current road snowplowing contractor. Yes.
Does that mean something about the bidding tomorrow?
It won't this time, correct.
And any other questions?
No, I, you mean it's not going to, he's asking, will it never go out to bid again? In this cycle?
It, it could, but it wouldn't begin this cycle.
This time it's not.
He would probably get another three-year contract, is my guess. And then, um, it could protect, he did a great job the last three years. Things could change.
So what's the point of not going out to bid? Or the, the idea behind not going out to bid, the reasoning?
Just because he's done a great job, he's, he's kept the prices reasonable. It, it's very time consuming, and there's so much work that we're trying to do on other things.
Who is the contractor?
It is J.R. Hill.
Does that go against the bidding rules?
That's why we're asking town meeting for permission.
So the town giving you permission overrides the having it go out to bid rules?
Correct.
So if you, we voted that down, then it would go out to bid?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Article Fifteen, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for community agencies. They're all in the back there. It totals seven thousand six hundred and ninety-six. Article Sixteen, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for patent-free library. That's thirty-nine thousand three hundred and sixty-five. Article Seventeen, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for planning board stipends. That is three thousand.
What is, what is the use of stipend? Is that the people who are on the board getting the money?
For the meetings they attend.
Per meeting stipend.
With the, the understanding, the town meeting voted to, to change that policy last year because of the number of hours it frequently takes for the members of the planning board to review applications. It can be quite complex.
We're doing an entire ordinance review as well.
Yeah, there's a lot of extra meetings that people are asked to attend to being on the board, so it covers that.
Article Eighteen, to see if the town will vote to give all money received from the state domain for snowmobile registrations to the Over the Hill ATV Club for the maintenance of their system or network of snowmobile trails on the condition that those trails be open to the public for snowmobile purposes at no charge in the snow season and to authorize the Select Board to enter into an agreement with the club under such terms and conditions as it deems advisable for that purpose.
Do they have a map of, of all the trails?
Yes. Yep, there's a map. I think there's a link on the website. Right, Carly?
Yeah, it hasn't been updated in some time, unfortunately.
We'll have to update it for giving them the money for that.
Maybe they can use the money towards updating their.
Bill walked, moved out and died, but it's, I don't know who's wanting to see it though.
Bill didn't die. He's still around. But he's moved south, yes.
So did die.
Who's wanting?
Bill didn't die?
Yes, he did. He's deceased.
What?
Okay.
I'm sorry. Did he die or didn't he die?
He did not die. He's living happily on South right now.
Oh, okay.
Anyway. There is a map. It's on the website. It may not be up to date.
Okay.
Bill left.
Article Nineteen, to see if the town will vote to carry forward all remaining appropriated but unexpended funds at the end of FY twenty-two, twenty-three from the General Assistance, Ambulance Service, Shellfish Warden, Birch Point Shoreline Stabilization, and Revaluation Accounts, providing the funds are used for the same purpose as, as originally designated.
Let's ask you that.
Article Twenty, to see if the town will vote to transfer all remaining but unexpended funds at the end of FY twenty-two, twenty-three from the Fire Department Operations to the Fire Department Capital Fund to be used for future capital building, vehicle, and/or equipment expenditures. Article Twenty-One, to see if the town will vote to transfer all remaining but unexpended funds at the end of FY twenty-two, twenty-three from General Roads to the General Roads Capital Fund to be used for future capital building expenditures.
Article Twenty-Two, to see the town will vote to transfer fifty thousand dollars from unassigned fund balance surplus to be deposited in the long-term capital improvement reserve account, fund reserve account. Article Twenty-Three, to see the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to?
Can you allow a little pause for our range to?
Oh, yes, of course.
Thank you.
Any other comments to that, that piece of article?
That's just, that's our fund that we put money in each year. It's our cap, the fund we use for our fire truck and other big expenditures. So we like to keep putting money in each year so it doesn't dry up. So that's what that article is.
Okay.
Article Twenty-Three, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to appro- to appropriate any anticipated revenues not otherwise dedicated for specific, for specific purposes to reduce the fiscal year 2023, 2024 tax commitment. Article Twenty-Four, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to appropriate from unassigned fund balance surplus to an account not to exceed eighty-eight percent of the not, uh, total non-capital expenditures for fiscal year 2022, 2023, and not otherwise appropriated herein to reduce the, the fiscal year 2023, 2024 tax commitment. Article Twenty-Five, to see if the town will vote to authorize the payment of tax abatements approved by the Select Board and assessors from the property tax overlay or, if necessary, from unassigned fund balance surplus. Article Twenty-Six, to see if the town will vote to fix the date of October fifteenth, 2023, as the date when fiscal year 2023, 2024 taxes shall, shall become due and payable and to charge eight percent on unpaid taxes after that date. Article Twenty-Seven, to see if the town will vote to set?
What was the question, Michael?
Just a question. It says to fix the date. What does that mean?
After that date. So after October fifteenth, you are then late as if, and you start paying interest.
It's a fancy word for saying, set the date.
Got it. Sounds like, was the date broken?
And is the eight percent, it calculates per, like, eight percent per date or month?
Per diem.
Per diem.
Article Twenty-Seven, to see if the town will vote to set the interest rates to be paid by the town on abated taxes at four percent for fiscal year 2023 and 2024.
What does abated mean?
Challenged and accepted, I guess, when you're abate, you're trying to get a ta- a credit, tax credit.
If I, if I have my tax bill set for six thousand dollars because my house is worth half a million or whatever, and I think it's only worth thirty thousand, I would ask for an abatement and the difference is what the taxes would actually do based on the value that the house is, in my opinion. And then, um, that comes to the Select Board to see whether or not that might be a valid concern or if I'm grossly underestimating the, the value of my house, probably.
Or if you had, if you were charged for thirty acres and you had twenty-two, do you have any acre overcharge on that? That's an abatement. You could?
I think part of the charge.
Yeah, we've done quite a few of those, actually, at land, so.
Okay.
Okay, there we are now.
Article Twenty-Eight, to see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector to accept prepayment of taxes. No interest shall be payable on any prepayment. Article Twenty-Nine, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to direct the treasurer to waive foreclosure of a real property tax lien mortgage if it determines such course of action to be in the best interest of the town. Article Thirty, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to dispose of town-owned personal property with a value of over five hundred dollars and deemed by the Select Board to be a surplus on such terms as it deems advisable. Article Thirty-One, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to sell and dispose of tax-acquired property held by the town on such terms as it deems advisable and to execute quit plane deeds for such property, except that the Select Board shall use the special sale process required by thirty-six MRS nine forty-three C for qualifying homestead property if it chooses to sell to anyone other than the former owners. Article Thirty-Two, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to apply for and accept state, federal, or other grants, including funding from the American Rescue Act, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, on behalf of the town for municipal purposes, including, when necessary, the au- the authority to sign grant contracts, documents, and other paperwork, and accept the conditions that accompany grant funds, and to appropriate and extend such funds for authorized purposes as the Select Board deems to be in best interest of the town during the upcoming fiscal year. Article Thirty-Three, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to accept conditional or unconditional gifts of real property, provided that no single gift will obligate the town to incur liabilities that total a thousand dollars or more per year as deter- as determined by the Select Board. Article Thirty-Four, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to accept or reject donations of personal property and/or to accept or reject gifts of money to the various accounts of the town for the ensuing fiscal year and to appropriate those monies donated for specific purposes.
Robin, do you have a question?
No, I'm just, okay, I just don't want her, it's going too fast.
Okay, we'll slow it, we'll slow it down.
Sorry, okay. I looked up, sorry. Article Thirty-Five, to see if the town will vote to maintain and exercise, if appropriate, its right to take river herring from the New Meadows Lake consistent with the terms and conditions specified at the March nineteen seventy-seven town meeting. Article Thirty-Six, to see if the town will vote to maintain a fishway on Winnebago Lake and to exercise its right to take river herring in accordance with the terms and conditions specified in the June nineteen eighty-eight town meeting and in agreement with the City of Bath and the Town of Pittsburgh. Article Thirty-Seven, shall the ordinance entitled twenty twenty-three amendments to the Town of West Bath Development Review Ordinance regarding application submission deadlines to be enacted.
And if you'd like more information, down here is right here.
And, and you also have all the ordinance language, or if you don't, we have it up here.
Okay.
Do you want me to explain? Yes, yes, okay. So Article Thirty-Seven is really a housekeeping matter. It has to do with the amount of days before someone comes before the planning board that they have to actually submit their information. It was requested by the town clerk. Um, right now, currently, if you look, it's, it's fifteen days. If it requires a hearing before they, we meet at the planning board, the hearing has to be advertised fourteen days before, so they have to like overnight, and that's really not long enough. So we're just backing that off to the twenty-two days. Um, all the other changes in here were proposed by the town attorney when this went to the attorney for review. So the twenty-two, the fifteen days, twenty-two days, legal things in there to make it consistent. So that's really all it is, is a, a housekeeping thing. To give Carly more time to do the hearing notices. Is everyone okay with that one?
Good. Article Thirty-Eight, shall the ordinance entitled twenty twenty-three amendments to the Town of West Bath Land Use, Land Use Ordinance Regarding Communication Tower A be enacted? Uh, I can, I can explain that one?
Yep. So this one was proposed by the Select Board. The county has come forth wanting to use a piece of land to put up a new tower. The, um, ordinances at this point say that towers have a maximum height of a hundred and fifty feet, which really is not feasible for most towers these days and how far they have to travel. Um, it's more like two hundred feet. So they came asking for a change to the ordinance. This ordinance was sent from the selectman and the administrator to the lawyer and came back with, um, it now says that, provided however that no height limitation shall apply to a communication tower whose owner or principal leasing is a municipality, county, or other quasi-government entity as determined by the planning board. So any government agency can have no limit for their tower height. Um, someone coming in like Comcast would have a limit of a hundred and fifty feet according to this. The height limit when it was set originally, when the tower ordinance was created, also has a stipulation that the property has to be, um, the offset within the property has to be a hundred and twenty-five percent of the height of the tower. So if you have a two-hundred-foot tower, you have to have two-hundred-and-fifty-foot radius circle within the property so that, basically, so if the tower falls over, it's not going to fall in neighbor's house or property or anything like that. That stipulation is still in here, so even though it says unlimited height, you still have that radius restriction, um, on the property, so.
I think this is, this is one of three or four, um, towers that Sagittar H, um, County is putting up to help with, um, communications emergencies. Right now, their radios don't get out to all the places that it needs to. This will be erected on the Martha J Reno Road, in case you guys were wondering where it was going. So it's really not in a high population area, so. Any, any other questions on that?
Article Thirty-Nine, shall the ordinance entitled twenty twenty-three amendments to the Town of West Bath Land Use Ordinance Regarding Live Entertainment Be Enacted?
So this one was brought forth to us, um, to ask if live entertainment could be in, allowed within the business and commercial zone. I do know our business and commercial zone on State Road and everywhere is peppered with businesses and homes. Um, so prior to that, it was not allowed. It is allowed in the UDP zones, over by the school, uh, the Wing Farm, which is really, there's no residences around there. So we adjusted the ordinance to allow it with a stipulation that live music is not, live entertainment, including music or whatever, is not permitted after nine P.M. in the business and commercial and then the mobile home park over there. Other than that, it's more language underneath this article. Be, be just giving the purpose and the definition of what live entertainment is. I can, I can read it all if you'd like, but if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Everyone okay with that?
All good? Article Forty, shall the ordinance entitled twenty twenty-three amendments to the Town of West Bath Marine Resource Conservation Ordinance be enacted? Do you have? There's a printout of this, you would have it stapled?
It's huge. It's a rewrite of the current ordinance without very much substantial change. It clarifies a number of things that were unclear.
And anything that has, is in blue, anything that's underlined is being removed?
The copies, unfortunately, for the public are in black and white.
Is there still lines and underlines?
There's still lines.
So, anything that has a line through it is being removed, and anything that's underlined is being added?
The people on the marine resources have given preliminary approval to the changes. I don't imagine that there would be opposition from them.
And this was also vetted through, we have marine, what are we calling these?
Sagittah County is our.
Shellfish. As our shellfish warrant currently, and we have them looking at this too, to make sure the stuff they could enforce, that it wasn't just written and there was no enforcement. So, we also have their blessing with this.
We transitioned from a shellfish warden to the Sagittah County, which actually provides significant enforcement, and it has been very beneficial to the current licensees.
So, that is to say that the shellfish warden is a county-level official? They are current deputies who are under separate contract for the town of West Bath.
The sheriff's department?
The sheriff's department, so they're, they're all trained and ready law enforcement, with full law enforcement powers, which our former shellfish warden did not have.
And they're also doing this for the town of Woolwich and hopefully other towns in the future, so it's working very well.
We've had unlicensed people fishing in our waters, and they've helped rectify that, as well as ensuring that everything that's supposed to happen, happens. Any questions regarding that? I think it's the school.
No.
One more.
One more.
Article forty-one.
Article forty-one, this is written ballot required by statute to see if the town will vote to increase the property tax levy limit established for the town of West Bath by state law if the municipal budget approved under the preceding articles will result in a tax commitment that is greater than that property tax levy limit.
And it's never happened, if it makes you feel better, it just has to be in there.
Forty-one, to see if the town will vote to add coverage for full-time, non-teacher planned school support employees under its main public employees retirement system, main PERS, participating in, participating local district P L D plan as follows. And this would agree to add coverage for full-time, non-teacher planned school support employees who regularly work at least thirty-six hours per week under its regular plan A C effective July first, twenty-three. And further, it would allow eligible school support employees who elect to join main PERS on July one, twenty-twenty-three, to purchase prior service credit for employment within the town of West Bath and/or West Bath School Department before July first, twenty-twenty-three, and to authorize the school board to enter into an agreement with the non-teacher planned school support employees who elect to join main PERS on July first, twenty-twenty-three, regarding whether the town school will share the cost to purchase prior service, and if so, to what degree, and directs the school board to provide main PERS with a signed copy of that document, and to authorize the town administrator to sign the amended agreement between the town and the main public employees retirement system.
If you have any questions, I'd direct it back here.
Emily, you know more about this than we do.
Do you want to come sit up here?
We will. Come up here.
I didn't mean by. I'm not. Answer this question.
So, essentially, I mean, this is very similar to article seven. We discovered through a self-audit that we had some teaching positions that aren't eligible, I'm sorry, some non-teaching positions at the school that aren't eligible to participate in the main state retirement system.
What kind of people talk about the janitors or?
I think it would be our office manager and a technology position that we have in the school.
And the librarian, is there a school librarian?
Librarian is considered a feature for the purpose of the school.
So, this plan will allow anyone who is a full-time employee, who doesn't already fall under the teaching fortune, to be able to be eligible for main state retirement, and they're not currently?
Yeah, because it's a little bit out of the thirty-six hours per week. I mean, for all summer, I mean, I don't know how you figure that out, the thirty-six hours per week, because assuming some weeks are out there, you know.
The way that Makers is determining it, because these are their languages, the full-time within the time that they're contracted to be at school.
It's common for school districts to have these positions eligible. When we withdrew from R S U one, we missed making this change to our Makers account. One of these positions has been participating in Makers, and Makers has gladly been accepting the payments we've been sending, and we did a self-audit in training a new employee and discovered that those positions weren't eligible. So, this would allow us to make those positions eligible and negotiate with the person who had been participating to buy back credit for those times.
Is that going to cost the town some money? I guess that's a question, too.
It's not going to cost anything more than has already been spent. The money ensued there in the credit, and if we choose to allow that eligibility, it would go forward at no additional expense. Next is article forty-three, to see what sum the town will vote to authorize the school board of directors to expend for regular instruction. The school board of directors recommends two million, six hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand and seventy-three cents. This covers the general instruction that occurs at the West Bath school. It also covers both the public and private tuition that we pay for students in grade six through twelve. Article forty-four, to see what sum the town will vote to authorize the school board of directors to expend for special education, the school board of directors recommends six hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-three cents, and that is based on the current need of our student population today.
Especially in case we said to both of the people who we need to help, or people who are on the top level.
Yeah, it would cover anybody who has a public, individual education.
That's simple, any talented and gifted?
No.
No.
Women and talented, well, it's under regular instruction.
Oh, okay. Article forty-five, to see what sum the town will vote to authorize the school board of directors to expend for career and technical education, the school board of directors recommends zero. Any of our sixth and twelve students, that would be covered through the tuition payments that we authorize in article one. Article forty-six, to see what sum the town will vote to authorize the school board of directors to expend for other instruction, the school board of directors recommends forty-five hundred, and that's to cover, you know, the museum's free and guest speakers expert to help with our fieldwork. And I'll just point out that it's been forty-five hundred dollars for nine years. Article forty-seven, to see what sum the town will vote to authorize the school board of directors to expend for student and staff support, the school board of directors recommends two hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventy-four cents, and that covers salaries and benefits for our guidance program, our health, our technology program, staff development, training, our library program, and our M B A student assessment Article forty-eight, to see what sum the town will vote to authorize the school board of directors to expend for system administration, the school board of directors recommends a hundred thousand, eight hundred and two dollars and forty-two cents. That covers expenses for the office of the superintendent. It also covers the school board expenses, our financial software, our insurance, any advertisements, dues, and membership fees that we pay, and our other expenses. Article forty-nine, to see what sum the town will vote to authorize the school board of directors to expend for school administration, the school board of directors recommends two hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-seven cents, and this article covers the salary and benefits of the principal and the support staff. It also includes things like our car fee, copier rental fees, supplies, any dues and membership fees we have to pay for, as well as contracted services. Article fifty, to see what sum the town will vote to authorize the school board of directors to expend for transportation, the school board of directors recommends a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eighty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents, and this covers transportation for all students, grades K through twelve, who attend an R S U one school. Article fifty-one, to see what sum the town will vote to authorize the school board of directors to expend for facilities maintenance, the school board of directors recommends two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars, and this covers all operational and upkeep expenses for the school, including the janitorial service, which is contracted, the regular inspections we need to do, roof inspections, ground maintenance, plowing, all those types of contracts.
Oh, wait, isn't plowing covered underneath the town plowing contract? It's a separate contract.
It's the same contract, but this is our share of that contract.
I gotcha, separate amount.
Actually, you're right. Maybe it's a separate contract. I think it's the same contract, but.
Right. Right. So, that covered, you said, roof inspections?
Yeah, we have to do an annual roof inspection, fire alarm inspections, sprinkler system inspections, all those types of inspections that we have to do every year in that. Electricity is in that item, heating oil is in that item. Article fifty-two, to see what sum the town will vote to authorize the school board of directors to expend for debt service and other commitments, the school board of directors recommend zero. The school currently has no outstanding debt. Article fifty-three, to see what sum the town will vote to authorize the school board of directors to expend for, expend for other expenditures, including food service, the school board of directors recommends fifty thousand, and that is entirely for food service.
For food or staff, a lot?
Okay.
And does that cover lunch or lunch and breakfast?
Lunch and breakfast. Article fifty-four, it's a long one, to see what sum the town will vote to appropriate for the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, and to see what sum the town will raise and assess as the municipality's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve as described in accordance with the Maine Revised Statutes Title twenty A, Section one five six eight eight. The school board of directors recommends a total appropriation of two million, six hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred dollars and forty-five cents, of which two million, three hundred and forty-eight, six hundred and, sorry, two million, three hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and five cents is locally funded.
Why are the numbers different? It does not include our subsidy. We only would raise the funds to reach. So, then you get the subsidy from the state, which is the difference?
Article fifty-five, which is a written ballot, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate an additional, additional local funds, the school board of directors recommends one million, five hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents, which exceeds the state's essential programs and services allocation model by, the school board of directors recommends one million, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents, as required to fund the budget recommended by the school board of directors. The school board of directors recommends one million, five hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and forty-nine, eighty-one, for additional local funds, and gives the following reasons for exceeding the state's essential programs and services funding model by one million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. The additional local funds represents local costs to support school budget programs and services that are not included in the state's funding model, including costs for transportation and special educational services.
So, are you adding forty-three? So, is article forty-three plus all of these adding up together?
Yes. Articles forty, fifty-four, fifty-five, and fifty-six are just summary articles of already, assuming the prior articles were adopted, these are summary articles.
Okay, so you're not adding them to the other ones?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And essentially, essentially, that works. The essential program and services model basically is a calculator, and it says, these programs are essential and they should cost X. And so, our, our amount is X, and it exceeds, we have to exceed that because all these other things that were required to provide, the state doesn't consider essential, though they are required, like transportation.
Thank you, Judge. All right.
Again, article fifty-six is a summary article, to see what sum the town will vote to authorize the school board of directors to expend for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty-twenty-three, and ending July, oh, sorry, ending June thirty, twenty-twenty-four, for the school administrative unit's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, non-state-funded state construction projects, of which we don't have any, additional local funds for school purposes under the Maine Revised Statute twenty A, Section fifteen, six ninety, undesignated fund balances, tuition receipts, state subsidy, and other receipts for the support of schools. So, our total recommended budget is four million, four hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents. Of that, the local contribution would be two million, three hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and five cents. The additional local contribution that we referred to in the early article is one million, five hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents. Our state subsidy is two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, thirty-six dollars and forty cents. The board is electing to use carryover from fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and we're electing to use carryover from twenty-one, twenty-two undesignated funds in the amount of a hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty, seven hundred and ninety dollars and eleven cents, all of which adds up to four point four million dollars.
So, the carryover, you guys have a four hundred thousand dollar roof on the horizon?
Say it again?
You have a four hundred thousand dollar roof on the horizon to repair? Do you have money to allocate towards that as well?
We, this is the ninth year that we've talked about this. Each year, we have been told, like, in the first five years, we would set that in our budget, and we were told by the board of selectmen and the budget advisory committee not to, that the capital investment fund would be used to cover that, so there is no money.
We haven't voted on that, though, to make that.
That's the directive we have been given consistently by the board of selectmen and the budget advisory committee every year, and we have been assured repeatedly that that's how it will be funded. So, no.
Be another town meeting process we'd have to go through before we get there, anyway. Be another town meeting process we'd have to go through before we get there, anyway. Well, it's just that you have this two-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, or two-seventy-seven thousand unallocated fund that could have been contributed to the four-hundred-thousand-dollar roof.
Again, five years in a row, we made that recommendation and we're still down.
I don't remember voting on it that way. So it's necessary to use the carryover to make your budget sound? The two different years of carryover, is that what you're saying here, the summary?
The, the approach is the, you know, again, the ninth budget we've done, we've always used whatever carryover existed to try to reduce the impact on the local contribution.
Okay, yeah, I'm just seeing two different, two different fiscal years of carryover, so.
So it, it's a little bit challenging because we're a little behind in audits.
Okay.
We assume that in the current year budget, we'd be able to pull out one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. So that's why that line is there. When it is audited and we know exactly what that number is, that becomes that second carryover number. So next year, when we talk about the budget, if there's any additional in twenty-two, twenty-three, we would apply it to that year's budget.
But without using the carryover, you'd have to raise and appropriate more?
Exactly. Article fifty-seven. Shall the school board of directors be authorized to transfer an amount exceeding five percent of the total appropriation of any cost center to another cost center or among other cost centers from the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year, provided that transfers shall not be permitted to increase the authorized total school budget? And the school board of directors recommends yes. And what that means is each of the earlier articles is a cost center. So if we had a surplus, say, in, in regular instruction and a shortfall in special ed of five, not to exceed five percent, we'd be able to make that transfer. It doesn't increase the amount of spend, it just increases how it's accounted for.
But you can't use special ed to pay for oil, because it's in a different cost center?
You're right, it was a vattington, right?
No, no, I'm just verifying.
Right, no, right, right.
Yes, because it's in a different cost center, okay.
Article fifty-eight. In addition to the amount of, in Article fifty-six. So shall the school board of directors be authorized to accept and expend any state, federal, or other grants, aid, and receipts during the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty-twenty-three, and ending June thirty, twenty-twenty-four for school purposes, provided that such grants, aid, and receipts do not require the expenditure of other local funds not previously appropriated? And the school board of directors votes yes. And essentially, that allows us to apply for grants, spend those grants, so long as it doesn't require the additional local funds. And our final article, Article fifty-nine. In the event that the town receives more state education subsidy than the amount included in its budget, shall the school board of directors be authorized to use all or part of the additional state subsidy to increase expenditures for school purposes and cost center categories approved by the school board of directors, increase the allocation of finances and reserve fund approved by the school board of directors, and/or decrease the local, sorry, and/or decrease the local cost shared expectation as defined in Title Twenty-A, Section fifteen-six-seven-one, dash, A-one-B, for local property taxpayers for funding public education as approved by the school board of directors? And our recommendation is yes. Essentially, that means should the state budget process, which hasn't concluded yet, probably won't by the time we go to town meeting, should they give us more money, it allows us to decide how to spend it.
So it all comes to eleven percent more for school expenditures coming here? Eleven point six-six.
Yeah, this is, this is a summary page of everything that we just.
I think he was asking what the percentage increase was this year.
So the, the total increase in the proposed budget is ten-point-five-nine percent.
Can you tell us the biggest increase, or the biggest thing that increased?
Tuition.
Tuition.
It, it's twofold. We're, we're taking two fifth-grade classes, setting them into, into sixth grade, whereas we're only graduating out the equivalent of one class. There was also a Supreme Court ruling in the past year that requires local municipalities to pay tuition to religious schools, which we hadn't had to pay in the past, and also, partial coastal community is closing, and there are four students that attend there that we hadn't had to pay tuition for that we have to pay for now. So our net increase in tuition students is there.
Thank you. Was it the special education went up more, eighteen-point-five-nine percent?
It went up a great percent, but a less dollar. And again, special education is budgeted based on current need. We, we may in fact need to come back and ask for more at some point. We are concerned, this is, despite the ten percent increase, this is a bare-bones budget. There's no new programs in here, there's no new staff in here. We're concerned, and we've had some expenditures arise recently that make it even more bare-bones.
Well, I was just thinking, if anybody put their electric bill this month, and saw how much that, no, not just imagine what schools and other things that are, it's out of control and it's not in any of our control.
Right, and you can't control tuition. Have you spent all of your arper funds?
It's all, it's all in proposed grants, so it's all in the projects.
Anything going towards the roof?
No.
Any other questions? Trying to make a motion that we enjoy?
Second?